Ladies and gentlemen, welcome. Even though the clock on the wall is running a little bit slow, like a lot of us old people, it's time for us to start. Thank you for being here. Mr. Hollinger will lead us in prayer and then the other two pledges will lead us in the pledges. Charles?
Pray with me if you will. Heavenly Father, please look on our efforts today that it may be pleasing in your eyes and that we stay on the path that you have set up for us. Guide and direct us that we may serve our fellow man, both in students, the families involved, and the faculty here at this fine institution. Give us grace when we have fallen short of the measures that you would have us follow. In Jesus' name we pray, and the people said, Amen.
You want to do it?
Okay.
Please join me in honoring our nation's flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please follow me in honoring the Texas flag. Honor the Texas flag.
I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Good afternoon.
It's morning somewhere, evening somewhere else.
Yes.
First item on the agenda is to opportunity for members of the public to speak to the board, anyone wishing to. Seeing none, hearing none, we move now to the chancellor's update.
Good afternoon. We're going to reverse the order of my update and begin with our new employee introduction. Mr. Dwayne Hagonz is the college's new vice chancellor for finance and administration as of April 1. Previously, Mr. Hagonz was the chief financial officer at Central County Services in Temple, Texas, and it's an organization dedicated to supporting individuals with mental disabilities. As a member of the executive team, he led the agency's budgeting process and oversaw the effective implementation of fiscal policies and operations. He holds an MBA with a concentration in finance from Our Lady of the Lake University and a bachelor's of business administration and accounting from the University of Incarnate or Mr. Hagonz? I'm sorry, I probably should have called you. Welcome.
Thank you. Happy to be here and excited to work with the team and the board.
He's a man of few words.
Yeah.
Get to ask him who his favorite football team is.
He gets right to it. Legislative update. On the federal, on the federal level, we're tracking the budget reconciliation legislative process that's taking place in Washington DC right now, and there are key elements of the community college agenda that our sector would like to see addressed. So I won't go through all of them, but two that we're looking at are workforce PEL. We support the extension of PEL grants for short-term workforce programs. There are some people who don't have an associate, who don't have a degree period or a credential who want to quickly get into the workforce and realize some upward mobility, particularly in this, this time. So we're looking at that, as well as Tax Free PEL Grant Act. This would, this would make PEL grants totally tax-free for, for our students. So we support that and we hope to see that in the, in the budget reconciliation. On a state level, we, we're starting to see some movement on a few bills that are relevant to our sector, community colleges. Senate Bill 1, the General Appropriations Bill, it passed the House, and so these state bills are currently include, they currently include both of them, House Bill 1 and Senate Bill 1, as I previously mentioned. Both include the amount requested by the coordinating board to fund community colleges in the next biennium, so we are watching to see what happens with House Bill 1 as well. House Bill 500, which appropriates the full $89,500,000. It's a supplemental funding for the current biennium. Community colleges have outperformed the estimates that were originally funded, with the original funding. So the, this amount was passed by the House on April 10th, and now we're waiting to see what happens with the Senate. House Bill 2110 and Senate, the companion bill, Senate Bill 1786, which would allow for the transfer, which would allow for transfer to private and independent colleges and universities to count toward the community college finance outcome, as well as some technical adjustments to HB8 language. Senate Bill 1786 was voted favorably in the Senate on April 10th, and so we're waiting to see what happens with House Bill 2110. So we'll continue to track those. This would be, this would be huge for community colleges because not all students attend state schools. Some of them attend University of Mary Harden, Baylor, and other schools. So this would be a really good thing for us. Senate Bill 3026 and House Bill 5502 seek to modify the calculation of certain ad valorem tax rates and changes the process for approving tax rates that exceed voter approval thresholds. Senate Bill 3026 was referred to the Senate, Senate local government on April 7th, and HB 5502 was referred to House Ways and Means on April 7th. So we'll keep you updated on that as well. So there are several other bills, some, you know, they haven't gotten much movement yet, but we'll continue to track those and bring them forward. And that concludes my update, sir.
Thank you, ma'am. Anyone have questions? The chancellor? I'm sure there's a plan, but should that bill succeed for completion of students that go to private institutions, how are we, how are we going to be able to track that? Okay. Go to the expert.
As, as far as the transfer data goes, the coordinating board gets that information from the National Student Clearinghouse and knows where our students attend, and we get the funding currently based on just the public institutions, and if it adds the privates, they'll do the same.
Anybody else? Question? Next item is a curriculum review report.
Hi, good afternoon. I'm going to talk to you all a little bit about the changes that we've had from when our curriculum review committee met on February 28th, and then we also had a special CRC March 13th, 2025. So the first one is revisions. Is there a clicker somewhere? For the PowerPoint?
We don't have it.
That's crystal clear.
Okay, well, the first one is hopefully the PowerPoint will come up here pretty soon. The first one are revisions for 2025. We are changing two programs. Well, it's actually four, but I'll talk about the first two first. Information Technology, the Associate of Applied Science, and also the Level 2 Certificate of Information Technology. What we're doing is we are adding two classes, COSC 1315, which is Introduction to Computer Programming, or ISTSC 1329, Programming Logic and Design. These, you have the choice of doing or for either one of these programs. And then the next revision that we have is Network, Cloud, and Cybersecurity, Associate of Applied Science, and also the Network, Cloud, Support, and Cybersecurity, Level 2 Certificate. There's two courses here, the ITSC 1316, Linux Installation and Configuration, or ITNW 1313, Computer Virtualization. And those two classes, they have the choice of doing either or in either one of these programs. Okay. And then the new programs that will be effective fall 2025 is the English, English Language, Language, ugh, English Language and Literature, Associate of Arts. This program did not add any new courses to it. It was a rework of courses. This program transfers to other four years, and we are one of the only institutions that did not offer this program. So we started offering this program so that our students stay here at CTC. And then the next program is Cyber Defense, Information Assur, Assurance, is the Occupational Skills Award. This program was recommended by the Advisory, Advisory Board, and the program will be offered online, and that was also the Advisory Board recommendation. And then the, the next program is Data and Software Systems, the Associate of Applied Science. This was a program that was recommended by the Advisory Board, and five new classes were added. It was ITSE 1346, Advanced Database, ITSW, Database Programming, ITSE 2309, Advanced Database Programming, ITSE 2347, Internship and Data Processing, and then the last one was ITSW, or I'm sorry, it's ITSW 2386, which was the internship. And then the next, the next program that we have is Occupational Skills Award. It's Information Technology. This is online. This program is also stackable to the Associate of Applied Science and also the Level 2 Certificate. Okay, and then we also have the Network Administrator, the Occupational Skills Award. This one will be offered online, and it is stackable towards the Associate of Applied Science and the Level 2 Certificate. And then we also have the Software Development and Programming, Associate of Applied Science. This is a new program that was Advisory Board recommended for software programmers. And then we also have the General Studies in Pre-Health. This is an Associate of Science degree. This is a pathway for healthcare majors, but it, it's not for nursing. This is for your pre-med or your PA students. This one is also focuses on chemistry and calculus math classes. And, and this is, the, these are classes that are needed for students that are wanting to go that pre-med track. This program will also be presented later on, so you'll hear more about it. And then we also have the Associate of Science in Psychology. This is your kind of a general studies degree, but with the addition of psychology classes. This will transfer into the bachelor's degree. This also, we also have a Psi Beta group that now the psychology majors will then be able to funnel into that group. Students will also complete the field of study, and this program will also be presented later on. And then the last one I have is the SMART program. It's the Specialization in Manufacturing, Automotive, Robotics, and Technology, Associate of Applied Science. This degree is stackable, and students have the choice of taking drafting or taking robotics classes. This program was also approved by the coordinating board on January 20th. And then the last ones that we have are planned. We have Data Software Systems, the Level 2 Certificate. We have Data Software Systems, the Occupational Skills Award. We have Software Development and Programming, the Level 2 Certificate, and then Software Programming, Software Development Program, the Occupational Skills Award. These are stackable into the Associate of Applied Science, and, and they just need some more revisions before they're ready to present, and we're hoping to bring them forward within the next, within next month or the next CRC. Are there any questions about the programs?
I'm assuming a lot of the programs or, or courses that you mentioned are already in place. I just want to make sure that we are continuing to look at what's not working, where there are low enrollments, and making those adjustments. Because that was a commitment, and well, I've been talking about it ever since I've been on the board, and so it, it's important that we do that, so that we don't overextend ourselves and we don't see the results, any results from that. And I'm assuming that you're doing that as you're adding and changing courses?
Yes. When new programs are added, they are vetted to ensure that they have high wage, high demand salaries out there. We also do receive coordinating board reports showing us what the low-performing programs are, and then we kind of take a deep dive and take a look at those and see if they need to be deactivated, or if they need to be revised, or what we need to do with these programs moving forward.
But even before we get to the high wage possibilities, I want to make sure that we're looking at course by course by course every semester. If there's three people in there, I mean, you know, obviously we need to do something about that. So I just need, I, I want assurance that that's being done.
I'm going to ask Dr. Cloonis to speak to that. It's been an ongoing conversation.
Yes, so the intention is that we will begin doing more comprehensive program reviews, and the data project that we just launched with Dr. Hines is going to give us a specific dashboards that will give the faculty the tools to enrich our conversations. We have the data, but making it where we can really see it, lay it out, have the type of conversations we need to. You will start to see data-driven decisions around some of our, our portfolio of programs. So thank you for bringing that up. We finally have the tools with the contract with Dr. Hines. We actually had a meeting yesterday. He's going to be building a suite of 10 dashboards that we will have ready for the fall to spearhead the conversation to, to do exactly what you're referring to. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else have questions about all the changes?
Okay, the next update is about our grants. The first grant that we have is the, through the coordinating board. It's a Student Success Acceleration 2.0 grant. This grant was for 250,000, and that funding is going towards implementation of the caring campus, which Julie came before you guys last month to request approval for that. We're also using it for wellness and mental health training, and then we also have student grants that we are making from this, this, from the Student Success Accelerated Grant. And then the next grant that we have is the SECO, the State Energy Conservation Office Grant. This grant went towards funding for a Prius trainer, a Toyota Prius cutaway engine, and also a Toyota Prius cutaway drive train for the automotive program. This, we're in the process, in, in the process with this grant, the car has been ordered. It just takes, I think it was 240 days, something to that, to get the car made so that the car can be delivered. So that is in the process. It just takes a little bit of time. And then the next one is the Texas Workforce Commission Adult Educational Literacy Grant. That was for 350,000. That grant is a renewal. And what, what they do in AEL is they provide English, ESL, English literacy classes, civics, GED preparation, citizenship, and then financial literacy. And then the next grant that we have is the Perkins, and this is renewed annually. Our Perkins grant for this year was total was $742,471. This grant is used to help fund our career and technical education students. It's to support them and also to help get the equipment to support them in their degree plans. One of the things that we just recently purchased was a large format cutting table that was approved by you last month. And then we also have the, it's the true grant, it's the Texas Reskilling and Upskilling Through, Through Education. It was for 279,950. That funded one full-time faculty member, and it also helped with redevelopment, or helped with developing our SMART program that was recently, recently approved. And then one of the grants that we just recently received was through Texas Workforce Commission. It's a Lone Star Future Fund grant. That grant was for $86,290. The, the funding was for HVAC Training and Foundational Skills, Level 1 Certificate. We are currently in the process of reviewing the proposal with TWC and getting ready to kick that off. And then we, we also have a couple of pending grants. These grants we've applied for, but we have not received word that we have gotten these grants or we have not, but hopefully, hopefully we got them all. We also have another part of the TWC, the Lone Star Future Fund. This one, what we're doing is we are looking at starting up a diesel program. And then the next one is the Jet Grant. That was for 187,000. We're looking at funding for a hybrid trainer, a powertrain system, HV EV system equipment, and an additional vehicle. We have not yet heard back about that one. And then we also have the Nursing Grant. That was funding for equipment to assist in the preparation of our nursing students. And then the last grant was through the Railway, Railway Foundation. We are asking for $5,100 to update the logistics books for our libraries. And then we also have some grants that we're reviewing. We have five grants. I did not include those on the PowerPoint, but we're taking a look at these and seeing what we can do with them, and we'll be applying for them this month and then next month, and then I'll have an update for you pretty soon on that. Are there any questions about grants?
It's a good list.
Okay, and the final thing I'm going to present to you about is our enrollment. And hopefully, there we go. Okay. These are after census numbers, and the last date that a student can drop with the spring, with the spring enrollment numbers is April 25th. Are there any questions about?
Can you read some of those numbers?
Yes, 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 yes. Okay. So for, for our total enrollment for fall for 2025, our worldwide, we're looking at 25,104, and then for Texas, it's 22,902. And then for the unduplicated headcount, which is on the other side of the graph, for 2025, our worldwide is 9,143, and then our Texas enrollment is 8,167. And then next month, I will be back with a report for our summer enrollment. Are there any questions?
Question? Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item is a new program, Associate Science Degree in Psychology.
Good afternoon, and thank you, Dr. Rose, for introducing the program. So I'm here to seek approval for the new program, Psychology Associate of Science Degree. So as Dr. Rose stated, the program is really designed for those students that want to pursue their four-year degree. Our students here taking this program will also be field of study complete if they wish to complete that four-year degree at Texas A&amp;M Central Texas. The program does require the addition of two new courses, which would be Social Psychology and Statistical Methods for Psychology. So here, degrees awarded in psychology have steadily, steadily been increasing nationally, and Texas actually leads as a state leader in awarding those degrees. So I hope that CTC can be part of that process. And as Dr. Rose stated, we do have a Psi Beta Psychology Club here on campus. It's a National Honor Society, and membership can help our students, once they graduate, of course, qualify for that GS7 level entry in federal service. So what we also do with Psi Beta is research, so we give students hands-on experience to research on topics of psychology, and then we also hope that they can write and eventually publish in the journal for Psi Beta. So questions?
Is, is there any additional staff that's going to be needed for this program?
No, sir. No, we will use the resources that we have and all the classes we already offer. So it's 42 core curriculum courses in the addition of 18 credit hours specific to psychology, and it will only be the addition of the two courses, and we have the staff to do that.
I get a degree. What's my chances of getting a job?
So as Dr. Rose stated, the, the process to get this approved in CRC, we do have to provide data that shows that this is, there is need out there in Texas for this degree, and students who want to get this degree and finish here with an associate could go off and, and apply for jobs like human service technician or positions in the behavioral healthcare field, and the average entry salary was about in the 50s, 50,000, and the need, at least the data shows that there is a represented need here in the state of Texas.
Thank you.
And it will, it will transfer to another college?
Yes, absolutely. Yeah, these are all courses that are in the ACGM, and it will, we will be field of study complete. So if our students, as of now, took all of the courses with the exception of the two new ones, and they wanted to transfer to A&amp;M, they would not be complete, and they would have to take these two courses elsewhere, not here, because A&amp;M does not offer those under those first two years, right? So these are lower division classes, so they would have to be taken somewhere, and I would love them, love it if they could take it here and keep those students here, and then we can just push them to A&amp;M Central Texas and just increase enrollment and, you know, help them be kind of successful outside of here.
Anyone else have questions? Give me.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Another new program, Associate of Arts Degree in English Language and Literature.
Thanks for letting me bring forward a brand-new program that's aligned with our mission of providing accessible education supports both student success and employability. As Dr. Rose had mentioned, believe it or not, we do not have an English major here at Central Texas College. Today, I'm pleased to introduce the Associate of Arts in English Language and Literature. This program is designed to build a foundation in literature, writing, communication, skills that are increasingly valuable in today's dynamic job market. This degree focuses upon power of language, both written and spoken. Students interpret texts critically, communicate effectively, and engage through historical and cultural contexts. While it serves as a strong standalone credential, this program is also designed to seamlessly transfer, providing, preparing students to transition into a wide array of four-year university programs. Some of the careers and relevant objectives of the course, writing and editing from journalism, technical writing, education, tutoring, various levels, research and analysis through communication and analytical nut roles, and let's not forget the poets, creative arts. These fields not only value communication and critical thinking, but actively seek candidates with strong humanities background. So the outcomes, once again, analyze all manner of texts, write effectively across different modes and platforms, understand literary traditions, demonstrate oral communication in academic settings, and conduct academic research to support literary analysis. This program directly supports Central Texas College's mission to provide accessible, high-quality education that enhances employability. It nurtures essential 21st century competencies, communication, critical thinking, analysis, research, that are vital in both the workplace and in higher education. In conclusion, the Associate of Arts in English Language and Literature is more than a degree in literature. It's a launchpad for academic advancement, career versatility, and lifelong learning. We respectfully request your support in moving this program forward. Thank you.
Same question I had before. Is there any changes or additional staff that's going to be needed or excessive costs?
Not at all. We have the teachers. We have the courses. It's a build it and they will come sort of situation.
I'm glad to see communication. I would hope to have like oral communication. I think many of our young folks are so focused on their electronic devices that they don't get out and, and socialize as much as I did when I was a kid. Without these little things, you know, black and white TV is all we had, but, and I was the remote control. But I, I see a lacking, yeah, in, in the ability for kids to get out, young folks, not just kids, but young folks to get out and interact personally, and I think if I was an instructor today, I'd, I'd want to have some sort of regular presentation by the students in my class, just to get them used to being in front of people. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next item, another new program, the Associate Science Degree in General Studies in Pre-Health Sciences. Next item, another new program, the Associate Science Degree in General Studies in Pre-Health Sciences.
Chairman Towers, distinguished board members, Chancellor Carter, and all my fellow attendees. Good afternoon. I'm Dr. Andrea Foskett. I'm the Department Chair for Science and Agriculture. I appreciate the opportunity today to present a new academic program within our department, and it's called the Associate of Science in General Studies in Pre-Health Sciences. There's always a need for healthcare professionals. A summary from the Texas Hospital Association, addressing workforce issues, states that, "In twenty twenty-three, more than sixty percent of hospitals were operating with fewer beds and reduced services due to lack of staff." These shortages are occurring not only because of a decrease of available physicians or nurses or other healthcare professionals at the end of the workforce, uh, pipeline, but also because of a bottleneck, bottleneck leading towards a burnout. And additional stresses in the hospital and workforce, uh, during the COVID-nineteen pandemic are all cited reasons for this recent worsening of a workforce shortage that already existed before the pandemic. So in response to the healthcare workforce shortage, last year in twenty twenty-four, Governor Abbott charged the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board with creating the Healthcare Workforce Task Force. This was created to examine this issue, as well as to identify ways to remove barriers to expand healthcare programs at institutions, to improve the quality of educational pathways, and to provide students with the tools that are necessary for them to be successful in healthcare in this state of Texas. So this is where Central Texas College can start influencing the healthcare educational outcomes in our state in a very, very meaningful way. The General Studies in Pre-Health Sciences Program is designed to provide a strong academic foundation for students aspiring to pursue careers in a variety of healthcare-related fields. So if you refer to the curriculum section in your packet, you would observe the degree plan associated with this, with this health, pre-health sciences program. This program includes a comprehensive curriculum that's focused on core foundational sciences, to include introductory biology, general chemistry, anatomy and physiology, and microbiology, as well as math, such as college algebra, and communication skills, such as composition and speech. This program prepares students for the rigorous academic demands of advanced health science programs, such as medicine, veterinary medicine, physician assistant, chiropractic, physical therapy, osteopathic medicine, pharmacy, clinical nutrition, rehab and therapeutic services, biomedical and clinical sciences, and much, much more. This program is intentionally, intentionally designed to be all-encompassing, to offer a flexible and accessible pathway to higher education for the student wishing to pursue a baccalaureate degree in the health sciences. It provides an opportunity for students to explore various healthcare professions and identify their own areas of interest. With this program, students will retain options, choosing a health science discipline focus that is driven by their own individual interests, as well as their future career plans. As examples, this degree allows students the flexibility of choosing a kinesiology course option, so they could choose either first aid or personal community health, a psychology course option. So this could either be general psychology or lifespan growth and development. And in their final semester, it gives the student the option to enhance their AMP knowledge, or perhaps choose a more rigorous organic chemistry course. These are all important choices that empowers a student to gain a strong academic foundation, to build a strong academic portfolio for further studies in specialized healthcare programs or health science programs. The Central Texas College Academic Department tries to deliver relevant programs to maximize the transfer of lower-level coursework to baccalaureate degree-granting institutions to best prepare our students for matriculation to further post-secondary study or perhaps entry into the workforce. For our graduates transferring to four-year schools, Baylor College of Medicine, Texas A&amp;M Health Science Center, UT Health San Antonio, UT Health Houston, UT Southwestern Medical Center, Texas Tech University Health Science Center, Uni- University of North Texas Health Science Center. These are all colleges excitedly awaiting the arrival of our graduates. Again, I appreciate the opportunity to offer an update today, offering you a glimpse into our new Associate of Science in General Studies in Pre-Health Sciences. This is occurring within our Science and Ag Department, a program, and this program was recently, um, approved in the March Curriculum Review Committee meeting. Uh, we expect this to be a fall semester twenty twenty-five implementation with your blessing. With that, I would, uh, be happy to answer any questions or any concerns or any comments. Thank you.
I wanted to ask you about, you talk about, um, the pre-health science, general studies in pre, pre-health science, local here on our campus. But the universities you named are in a different location outside of our community. How does a stu-, if a student chose this program and they transfer to Texas A&amp;M Central Texas, would there be a place for them to succeed there or to continue their studies there?
All of the courses within the curriculum of this degree plan are meant for transfer to four-year institutions. Uh, it depends on what programs these four-year institutions offer. Uh, A&amp;M Health Science Center College Station offers a Bachelor of Science in Biomedical Sciences. So there would be specific degrees that our students could, could pursue, like in chemistry or biology, which then help them to kind of, uh, lead into a bachelor's in pre-health sciences. But to remember that these students are mostly, or the students that are interested in this program would be interested in some kind of a healthcare-related track, not specifically, uh, a core science-related track. Uh, so it just depends on where exactly these, these, uh, these programs are offered, which allows them to then move into a, an MD or a, a PA degree.
And there's somewhere along the line, someone is sitting with that student that's interested in pursuing that program, that there isn't this hard stop when they finish here, and there's, what do I do now? I have it, but where, where do I go?
I, so please-
Tell me that somebody's, someone sits with this student and helps them move forward.
I completely agree with you. Advising, uh, to allow our students a successful transfer pathway from our associates program here at a two-year institution into a four-year school is extremely important. Uh, we have fantastic advisors that we collaborate with, uh, with the, with the Science Department. And of course, we also have our own faculty that are constantly interacting with these students, taking these classes. We're aware of these students that are enrolling in these programs. So we, I think, would be the best advisors for our students because we have that, uh, the interaction, the, the availability to, to talk to our students, to draw from our previous experiences and guide our students into that four-year pathway, whatever might be their, uh, interest or their discipline focus. Yes, ma'am.
Someone else?
So, uh, I've been waiting for something like this, and when I got the packet on Friday, um, I was reading through it. I have a daughter, everybody knows. She, she graduated from Dallas Baptist, and she got cell and molecular biology degree.
Oh, yes.
And she's going for a genetics in her masters. And, um, I told her about this when I was reading through it. And she said, "Dad, that would save kids fifty to a hundred thousand dollars to take the courses here before they go over to a four-year institution." That's a, that's a lot of money, and, and get to stay locally at home. At home, yeah. And then, then go off to college, but, uh, somewhere else, but-
We have a do.
Fifty, yeah, she still lives at home. Uh, but, uh, fifty to a hundred plus thousand dollars. Go to school here, get the degree, so we can get HB eight money, right? And then, uh, and then push them on out.
Yes.
That's, that's really good. Thanks for working on that.
I'd say your daughter's partner made that connection, that all of the lower-level coursework can be completed at Central Texas College, and that it opens up so many possibilities into whatever their health science focus might be. I mean, it leads them to so many different universities and different programs. Yes, sir.
Yeah, I have a, a, a son that's in the, uh, academic, uh, medical, uh, world. He's pursuing a DO.
Yes.
And, um, this would have been a great benefit to him, you know, when he, whenever he came home from his, uh, four-year, but, uh, that's a different story. There's a ton of programs out there, and, and opening the eyes of these students, if they are pursuing a medical track, uh, one, it's pretty rigorous. And then there's the MCAT. And, and the ability to succeed in that is far beyond what CTC's gonna target. But getting them prepped up to know that it exists and what it's about would be pretty important. As well as, you know, we kind of, uh, have an underserved community here, and there are some tremendous programs that we can start pointing them to that, uh, gets them through university and, and then through the medical applications track. And when, say, my son was looking at Shriner University, uh, they offered that, just not to him. But he, uh, he, he's succeeding, and he's doing marvelously well in the DO School, uh, College of Osteopathic Medicine. So, yeah, I think this is a great foot forward, and there's a lot more we can do with, and so I look forward to helping.
To your point, I do agree. Um, this offers the students in our community these opportunities to, to explore at lower cost, but also providing them the, a very strong foundation for those lower-level coursework. That's very important to, to set them on the right footing.
And, and you know, our students of the real-world moniker here, that, uh, when they're in this one, you know, they're living at home with mom and dad, and life's pretty easy. But when they get to these high-performing required, uh, positions, they're burning the midnight oil, and, and, uh, we need to make sure they understand what's about to hit them when they do succeed in getting into one.
So if you see in the curriculum or the degree plan, um, you, I'm, I'm sure our students will get a, a good glimpse of burning the midnight oil, when they, when they have to complete all of those advanced chemistry, anatomy, physiology, and microbiology and psychology courses thrown into the mix.
Well, and if they don't have a great background in, in calculus-
Oh, yes.
Even, the chemistry courses, some of them are calculus courses.
Absolutely.
And, and to, to know that, uh, going in, that, okay, I need to beef up on this discipline here in order to succeed, succeed in this one over there. Uh, and, you know, that knowledge and that guidance, uh, will help these students.
And that's what I'm most excited about, is the possibilities of giving that guidance so that they are best suited for success.
And prepare them for organic chemistry.
I totally will. I will do my best. Thank you so much for your, for your time.
Thank you for your presentation. Ms. Mason, you have several nominees for the Foundation Board.
I do. Well, good afternoon, Chancellor Carter, Chairman Towers, and Board of Trustees. On behalf of the CTC Foundation Board, I present three nominees for membership to the CTC Foundation Board. Each of our candidates has completed a nomination application and was submitted to our nomination chair, Dr. Jim Anderson. The applicants were then provided to the nomination committee for review and approval. The approval from the nomination committee was then submitted to the CTC Foundation Board for approval. At the last CTC Foundation meeting that was held on Thursday, March twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-five, the board approved the nominees as presented. The first nominee is Ms. Eva Kegel. Ms. Kegel is a resident of the Hockenheim area, and since April first, nineteen ninety-three, has been a Texas licensed Realtor Broker at ERA Colonial. She has served on multiple commis-, committees and boards in the community to include the Hockenheim Chamber of Commerce. She was the former chairman of the board, Hockenheim Chamber of Commerce Board Member, member of the Military Affairs Committee, the Avon Health Systems Foundation past Board Member, and a member of St. Paul's Catholic Church. The second nominee is Mr. Michael Morrow. Mr. Morrow is a financial advisor for First Command Financial Services in Colleen. Some of his community service includes volunteering at VLA in Colleen, Project Sanctuary, and CWJC. The third nominee is Mr. Samar Sam Halaby. Mr. Halaby is a longtime resident of the Central Texas area. As an accomplished and innovative entrepreneur, Sam has instrumented and ensured that our region has access to great culinary experiences. Sam and his wife Lily are owners of, uh, La Rio Mansion, Lily's Creations, Acropolis Greek Cuisine, and YHSLC. Sam currently serves his community in a number of positions to include the Hockenheim City Council, Avon Health Texas Foundation, the Greater Central Texas Federal Credit Union. I thank you for providing me this opportunity to present these spectacular individuals to you on behalf of the CTC Foundation Board. We believe that each of them will be an asset to our board. Does anyone have any questions regarding the nominees?
Great choices.
Thank you.
More aviation requests. Come right on down.
You may ask, why does he want now? Okay, so, uh, good afternoon, board trustees. I know I'm a little sick right now, so please tell me if I need to repeat something. Um, I just recovered this morning. So, solicitation IFB twenty-five zero twelve for the purchase of one factory-rebuild aircraft engine was issued. As you know, each one of the engines that we have on the aircraft have, uh, something called TBO, which is time before overhaul. And that's the reason why we presented to you a couple months ago, is one of the engines was reaching that point. One of our two Piper Archers, now Mercy X and two Charlie Tango, which is just for instrument flight training, has reached that point. So the option A was to overhaul such engine. Unfortunately, the wait time for that overhaul is of six months. And unfortunately, right now, the situation in the industry is, that's the average amount of time that it takes for an engine to overhaul. Thankfully, after two years of research, because we have been working on this really hard, uh, we found an option, which is to, uh, purchase a zero-time factor rebuilt, uh, engine, which would mean that we would have a third engine in our fleet in order to, well, as one is being repaired, the other one can continue flying without grounding the airplane. Instead of waiting six months, it would reduce our wait time to twenty days. As you know, six months of grounding can affect the, uh, students greatly, and it can affect the, um, I don't mean disrespect for the assembly line of our program, because as one student completes, the next one moves on to the next, uh, program and therefore to the next, uh, aircraft. So what we recommend is to award PAC Aviation International, uh, in the amount, I'm sorry, ninety-eight thousand five hundred and forty-eight dollars. Um, this is already budgeted in our, uh, program budget, so if, did you have any questions for me, please, uh, let me know. I'm very happy to answer them.
Any question?
Is there a grant for it?
I'm looking for grants actively.
By the way, student Consoilo said to tell you hello when I saw you today.
Thank you. Yeah, she's been doing really good.
Multiples, aren't you?
Uh, yes, yeah, it's been really busy around there with testing. We have, uh, one exam right now in, ongoing as we speak, so.
The, uh, the, the maintenance requirement on these, uh, uh, I'll just say the engines at least, is that the, the phase or the hours, uh, uh, cycles, what, what's the interval?
Uh, so in each, it depends on each engine. This one in particular is two thousand hours. Uh, for example, the older, uh, S- one fifty-two has an, uh, IO two thirty-five, and that one is a twenty-four hundred hour cycle.
And what's, uh, I guess the average time it takes you to fly that many hours, is it two years or one year or?
Uh, currently, it takes us, uh, in average, three years. Yeah, at our current pace.
Okay, and this kind of speeds that process up?
The more you fly, and then, yeah.
Okay, well, we, one more five?
Oh, yeah, we do. We've been trending up. We're doing it.
Anyone else? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Murphy, you have a revised fifty K list for us.
Good afternoon, Chancellor, Chairman, and Board members. Uh, next week, I will seek your approval for the revised fifty K list. In twenty eighteen, the board approved broker services with Tradition Energy, resulting in four long-term contracts with two energy suppliers, Reliant Energy and MP Two Energy. There was a slight oversight this past August, and MP Two Energy was left off the fifty K list. In order for us to ensure a smooth transition between Reliant Energy and MP Two Energy in June of this year, we need to add them to the fifty K list. Any questions?
Mr. Charlie, you have another item.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Next item is the Morton Hall room and board rates. Next week, I also seek approval for the Morton Hall room and board rates for fiscal year 2526. This increase will result in a 3.8% increase, which is based on the Consumer Price Index. For the fall '25, spring '26, double occupancy room rates will be thirty-two sixty-six from thirty-niney, or three thousand ninety dollars. Single occupancy will go to three thousand seven hundred and seventy-six dollars from three thousand six hundred. For the summer of '26, the double occupancy rate will go to two thousand two hundred and twenty-six dollars from two thousand eighty dollars, and single occupancy will go from, go to two thousand four hundred and twenty-seven dollars from two thousand two hundred and eighty dollars. The total increase equates to a hundred and seventy-six dollars for the fall '25 and spring '26 semester, and a hundred and forty-six dollars for the summer '26 semester. And if you look at the graph that was included in your handout, Central Texas College still remains one of the lower colleges when it comes to room and board rates.
Any questions? Thanks, sir. Mr. Jordan, do you have a moment to tell us about the chemistry laboratory purchase of four new chemical hoods? Tell us what those are.
How are y'all today? Good. Well, the good news is the small projects is coming to an end. The unfortunate news is, we had, during the process, we moved MLT and histology from science and built them labs in the nursing building. The MLT and histology had their own Benahoods. The note was added that those Benahoods were owned by CTC and would be installed by the When we got to the point, we moved them over, we got to the point to redo the science center, unfortunately, that note carried with the four hoods that were supposed to go into the science center, and they were new hoods that were supposed to be purchased. It was a Seymour project, and it was a guaranteed maximum price project, so we didn't have contingency built into the project itself. We did have, we do have carryover into the budget this year to finish the science buildings. So, that being said, the hoods, all the infrastructure are in place, that was left into the contract, but the purchase of the hoods is what I'm here to ask for today, and the installation of the hoods, so.
I'm not looking into notes, what, what's the price on that?
It is eighty-seven thousand six hundred and eighty-seven dollars, including contingency. I'm going to leave that out this time, so.
Questions? Our, your other item is the Fort Cavasus Building boiler replacement.
Yes, sir. During the end of the winter season, we had an issue with the boiler over in 3201 at Fort Cavasus. The boiler was put in in 2000, so it's now 25 years old. It has major issues, so I'll be asking for Brant Mechanical to replace the boiler at a hundred and seven thousand four hundred and fifty-seven dollars.
Questions?
That's new installation?
Yes.
New boiler, new installation for that area.
Who else? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Next item on the agenda is recommend any topics for upcoming agenda items from the Board.
I brought up the SAC COC dilemma we come up with every, but we're reviewing our items that we have, that they're going to review, and Savins gave me an update on today. We have six items, and my suggestion is review two every, every meeting until we get all six of them reviewed. That way, we will put our stamp of approval for this year, and if there's any question about it, we'll have it in the minutes, and it'll be there for everybody to see, and I think we'll be, be clean for our audit when they come and look at it. So that's my recommendation, we get two every month for the next three months.
Thanks, sir. Mr. Robinson?
Yeah.
One item from A, we will have an executive session on the agenda next week, personnel item. Remind you that the Board meeting next week on the 22nd and the workshop in May on the 15th. Nothing's been said today about graduation. You want to speak to that?
She's been holding meetings.
Trying to double time her.
Yeah. May ninth, graduation, our spring graduation will be held. Hopefully, everybody will be able to attend. We look forward to, to it. I don't have the numbers, but at this point, how many students have applied for graduation? Yeah, I apologize, I didn't, didn't check on that for you, but I can, I give you that next week if you'd like. And as usual, be there by six, it starts at 6:30.
Any questions about that?
Just a comment. I'm going to miss graduation for the very first time in all my years as KISD, Board President and Board Member, and this one too. I'm really, but it's for a good reason, and so I'm, I'm okay with it. But I always look forward, that's just a special day.
Thank you for letting me know.
Do we need a quorum attending graduation? Because the chair will be out that day.
You told me that earlier.
We will be together. We are not.
You're not together? Okay, okay. Don't start those rumors.
I don't know what she's doing, but I'm celebrating my 82nd birthday.
Well, I'm not celebrating.
And Mr. Hollinger.
I have two grandsons graduating in.
Okay.
I'll just have it without her.
I'll be in Georgia.
Why did you have to bring it up?
I'm here for you.
Thank you, sir. And you'll be here? Mr. Reev, you'll be here?
I'll be there.
Yay, all right, and Mr. Olgersen?
I'll be there.
Wonderful, okay. Well, we'll celebrate without the others. Thank you so much.
And with that, the meeting is adjourned.